Good afternoon and welcome to the special call meeting of the Brunswick City Commission today. It's day August 16th, 2023, and we will rise for an invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we thank you for this day as we do for each day. It is truly a gift. You promised us no tomorrows. So let us make the most say, help us be mindful of the needs of others. We pray for those who keep our city safe in all ways, and we ask that you would be here with us as we conduct our business. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Under God, says, says.
The only item on the agenda for a special called meeting is a public hearing regarding the city's purpose 2023 millage rate. And our city manager Gina McDuffie will.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to vent the information regarding the proposed property tax increase and adoption of 2023 military. This public hearing being conducted as required state law OCGA 8-5-32 to notify the public and provide an opportunity for public input in that regarding the action taken, being proposed for adoption of the military, which governs the city's tax aid. The 2023 digest, which information on green, presenting the property digest of, excuse me, 494 million, six fifty-five thousand dollars for 2023. Motor vehicle valuation of 2.1 million, mobile homes valuation of 56,680, and heavy duty equipment at 26,664 dollars for a total growth of 496,937,846. Our exemptions for the are calculated at 43,553,877 dollars for a net digest value of 453,383,969. That gross millage rate would be 32,97 mills, but we do roll back our millage based on the amount we get from sales tax. And the rollback for tax is calculated at 10.75 mills, which leaves millage rate of 10.219. Of course, which rate for this year is the same as the military has been for the last niners. However, based on state tax, because the military that is proposed is higher than the rollback military, we are required to have a public hearing to state that the property tax increase. The proposed mileage for this year again is the same as it has been. The digest how increased by 31.1 million dollars in added value, 16.8 million doesn't changes. If you calculate the mileage without changes, the mileage would be 12.079, which is rollback rate, which is 1.14 mills less than the millage being proposed. The military is not changing, as I said, so please that value did not change. Our properties that are assessed same value, there would be no property tax increase. But for parts that are valued higher, that military will apply a higher, higher tax rate. Because of this difference or increase, the state requires multiple hearings to be conducted to notify the public and review the capital increase. The increase in the mileage itself present an 11.09 increase in the mileage. The increase in the property tax is 9.44%. For a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars, the difference would be approximately 43.32 cents. And for a home valued at 300,000 dollars, the difference would approximately 136 dollars and 80 cents. But as previously stated, the military rate is not increased. So for persons whose property value is not changed, the taxes will remain the same. Basically, that's all the information I have to present, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Say we've had same mileage rate for eight years.
Nine years.
I know this is always confusing for us because it does sound like it's a tax increase when it's a tax revenue increase for the city.
Right.
We're actually doing better. Our property values are going up, and when your home gets assessed, it does create a higher tax. But at the same time, that's a positive thing because it means our community is thriving and doing well.
Right, and what you mentioned is exactly, it's a tax revenue increase. And because of that revenue increase, state requires us to publish it as a tax increase. And revenue increase equates to about 600,000 dollars this year. And you know, the staff looked at the mileage to evaluate whether or not we could rock the mileage or show some decrease. But because of anticipated increases salaries, anticipated increases in recreation department being brought back, the transit system, we're trying to stand that up, get that in place this year. And we're also looking at developing a housing program. So with all of those things impacting the city's budget, we felt like it was not an appropriate time or proposal to roll back the mileage.
Thank you. I hope it's helpful for people listening in.
So what we're actually saying is we are increasing services because we're getting revenue back. We're going to get transportation, and we're now got a housing department to address some of the housing issues that we face as a state. The clarity, and you said it, but I know you said for people whose property tax or their property did not appreciate. I've had a lot of calls and conversations with peoples that the taxes that the mileage actually didn't, but it's that the tax assessor reeval the properties and so, because my property appreciated, so it went up. But the mileage that the city has has not changed, so the city did not increase the property taxes. It's because properties were assessed by the county tax commissioner. Which all, and if it was reassessed and appreciated, then it caused your property to be higher in value, thus creating a higher tax.
Right, and generally only happens, you know, the market changes. And we have had some market shifts during this year as well as if you renovate or add on to your property or require personal property. And as you see on here, it had every machinery and additional assessment. So any of those changes would increase value of property. And that's basically the only time that your tax or increase if that assessed value increase.
And that's what I just want to ensure that people understand that it's this, that city did not reevaluate, did not assess their property. That's something that is the task of the county's commissioner.
It's tax assessor, right. And that the tax assessor's office is legally separate, city, county, and the tax commissioner. So that assessor board is some in a separate body. And generally, you know, that's why they send out assessment notices so that if people have questions about the assessed value of property, they can appeal it to that board.
And we just want to make sure that people know, anybody that's listening or any of that's here, they understand.
Yes, we'll open it for a couple. I was going to add one small point, and thank you for that in-depth explanation, is nine years ago, the last that we actually changed the mileage rate or the roll back, that was smack in the middle of the recession. And things were really hard for everybody. It was challenging for the city. So I think not you're looking for a reason, but that was, that was certainly a long reason that we needed to adjust things in order to keep the city moving forwards. Are there questions or comments? All right, we'll close out that portion, but go to the public hearing. So if there's anybody here to speak for or against during this hearing of our mileage rate, please step forward and state your name. We can't.
I have, I have two.
Your name?
Oh, Alan Zing. I live in Historic District. I have two questions. One is of the 11% increase in, in revenue. Oh, I need to push this. 11% increase in revenue, what percentage will be truly spent? And what percentage of the actual expenditures an increase versus, an increase in services versus an increase in wages, you know?
Okay, so as I stated, the 11% represent about 600,000. We put in the budget 2.1 million dollars for recreation. We also have 220,000 dollars of expense for the transit system. So essence, that increase in services not only covers the 600,000, but in addition to, the city is absorbing more expense for those services. So the salaries is another kind of portion of it. But as you see, the increase doesn't cover even half of what the expenses are.
Are we going into debt? I mean.
Oh, no. The city no long-term debt. We balanced our budget. And we basically, what I stated was evaluated the mileage rate. And this, at this mileage, we can balance our budget. We cannot lower it, and we don't need to increase.
My second question is, is there a comparison, I'm sorry, is there a comparison of mileage rates from cities around the state? We fall in that. What, what is that site again? Georgia. Thank you so much.
Anybody else wishing to speak, ask a question about the mileage rate? We thank you for being here.
Ms. McDuffie, do you repeat the numbers of the dollar amount for the value that.
There was 39.1 million dollars of assessed value. The other changes is 16.8 billion, and those are, I'm not sure exactly what the other changes are relative to. It may be because of, like I said, development or new.
If we have anyone else wishing to speak for or against, or ask any questions, then we go ahead and close out this public hearing. We will have another public hearing this evening at 5:30. A special call meeting for the mileage rate then, and then followed immediately at 6 o'clock with regular scheduled commissioning. So, oh, is there anybody online that wishes to speak through chat maybe? No, okay. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I actually think that's five minutes. Leave it open for really quick. Anyone else? Anyone? Anyone else? And now we will close the public period and do we motion to adjourn? Just to make sure I'm doing that correctly. All right. Hearing the first, do a hear second. Hearing the first and the second, all those in favor, show by the usual sign of aye. Aye, opposed the same, hearing none, the mode passes, and we are adjourned. It is now 6 o'clock. We call this Brunswick City Commission, we schedule commission meeting for Wednesday, August 16th, 2020. A session. We all stand for the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we bow? Father God, thank you for this time that we before you, the time that we have to come together to do the business so the people could bless us with wisdom, grace, and mercy, and moderation. In your son Jesus' name we do pray.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, nation, under God, indivisible, never seen, discussed, or fought.
We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any addendums or attractions?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Hearing the first, do I hear a second? Hearing the second, all those in favor, show by the usual sign of aye. Aye, all opposed the same, hearing none, the is adopted. We will now move on to public comment.
Good afternoon, to the honorable.
How you doing?
Mayor, Mr. Carl Johnson. To Councilwoman, Ms. Juliet Martin. Councilwoman Felicia Harris, after Harris. Councilwoman, Ms. Kim O. And Councilman, Mr. John A. Carson III. I understand that third time maker. I'm honored and before you this evening to share with you the legacy of two of the important people that have made a significant impact in my life. I am Devine A. Wilcox. I am the son and sole survivor of Mr. Eddie, of the late Mr. Eddie Souness Wilcox of Brunswick. A 1974 graduate of Glenn Academy. U.S. Navy retired with over 20 years of honorable service, retired from the federal government with 25 years of honorable service. Ordained at one of our local churches in the Virginia Beach area and currently residing with my family in Virginia Beach. I want to just brief. I want to just briefly, and I understand I only have a few minutes, to the legacy of my mom, dad. My mom and dad had two, and my brother Irving passed on Christmas Day in twenty seventeen, and shortly after that, mom was placed in the senior care center in twenty seventeen. And since that time, I understand now what it means that when mom was gone, that it's not home anymore. Some of y'all know about. My father was one of the first African-American police officers here in Brunswick. He was with the city back in nineteen sixty-seven, I believe, and September nineteen sixty-five, he was burned over eighty percent of his body. While working for MICA. And he served as the National Director of the Police Athletically or the Power Program here with the Brunswick, which kept a lot of youth off of the streets, which was a very successful program. In honor of that, city, a couple of years ago, named renamed Field Number Three, I did Howard Kaufman Park as the Eddie Wilcox Field. Two years ago, I was down here everywhere during Black History Month, and while I was out there, I was just asking different ones, you know, hey, I'm doing a documentary. Who is this guy Eddie Wilcox? And I was saddened that no telling. One of my recommendations with all of that my father has contributed to Howard Kaufman, the police Brunswick and the field is I have relics. I have memorabilia that in the, and I understand that the city is going to be the park back over in March, if I'm not mistaken. To have a, an area out of the building that talks about who this man was. Particularly, it was because of Black History Month. And sadly enough, there have been a lot of people in Brunswick have contributed and were pillars to this community, but they have memory have gone by the side. You know, because we're in a different generation now, so a lot of our children don't know of our history. And so I'm proposing to the city with that, that accept the, the, the memorabilia, the relics that I had to be inclusive inside the building at Howard Kaufman Park so that even from now, people can come in and read the history about who that man was. Ms. Eunice Wilcox, there's not much I can say about her because everyone knew her. My mom was the gatekeeper at Glenn Academy, guidance, guidance officer during several years while working there. My mom has had impact, has had impact on lives of notables as Tommy Brown, the NBA Commissioner of Rome. And I want to thank you for, when mama can no longer do the absenteeism, that you picked up the torch and ran with that for her. Mama worked out of the effort at Manor House on G Street. My mom helped in nineteen sixty-nine usher an urban renewal in Brunswick, Georgia, which resulted in Albert Terrence and downtown apartments. My father and her Perry Park townhouses for since the conception. A lot of them trees along Cleveland Street, my brother and I and others planted those trees and to come back here from now and to see they have grown. Mom was she was the gatekeeper for Baptist Church for years under the tutelage of Reverend Newman. You know, when humans came back, came to Georgia initially in nineteen sixty-four, and I remember them up with them in shallow. And all the people who helped shape my life are gone now. And so it's up to, to pour back into generations of children who may not even know of their history. And I just want to thank the city for supporting my mom's throughout their years, they're gone now. It's been a little over a year since my mom passed. And, but to thank the city for all the efforts that you all have poured back to them, as well as they have poured into the, in building this city in the years to come. Thank you.
You, we want to say thank you, your parents' service to our community, to our city and your service to our country. And for protecting us and keeping us having the rights that we have here to. Before you leave, if you can give your information to Ms. Simpson, we will connect with our director Booker, who is of our Parks and Rec and has built out the rebuild of Howard Kaufman Park. I think it's a beautiful idea, recognize not only the family history that you have here, but the history of so many others that have brought this point, so thank you so much.
Good evening. I have been worrying for several months. Why is it our municipal government cannot remove the, I don't, I want to refer to as the way our clients, but the homeless folk part of G and Gordon Street, so I consulted two of what I call learned attorneys here. And they had me, they pointed me to do my own research, and they led me to an article about a local newspaper. And it comes from a misinterpretation of law. Our local attorney. And I want to read from, from the newspaper. City Attorney Brian Corey explained as well that the will was in exists prior to the new ordinances, the two that you all had just come up a few weeks ago or several ago. The ordinance was, was put in place for future facilities as the homeless said, unquote. Now, this is our attorney, this was a joint meeting of all of the leadership. I didn't follow was there along with our attorney, and this is a misinterpretation of the law. Now, I want to, I want to read this again, he said that because for here before certain things that they are permitted to do, and that is accurate, but here's what the law states about. It's really called the grandfather clause, you know, you all understand that. Provisions permitting persons aged in a certain business before the passage of it act regulating that this to receive license a prerogative without meeting all the criteria. And the, and the key word in this legal court comes from the legal library, all of the facilities that the grandfather clause admits them to access. But they must not be involved in violating all, all of the clauses. Now here are the clauses. This interpretation of our attorney violates public common nuisance. What is a public common nuisance? Now you all have permitted a group homeless folk to set up in a neighborhood unsanitary facilities, no telling what all kind of germs that's floating around in, indecent, unsafe facilities. People have let their children out of their homes. A public nuisance deals with interfering the rights and common to the general public. It is behavior unreasonably interferes with the health, safety, peace, comfort, or convenience of the general community. Now this is taking place on the corner of G and Gordon Street because we felt the legal opinion of this committee, uh, mission that because the well was there first, what's going on there now, alright? And the law states that if any of these nuisances occurs, it's, it's not, it's not lawful. The government can come and shut it down regardless and for the clause. Now, we have half a day, we have to look at half dressed people. We're looking at prostitution going on, looking at all kinds of drugs and stuff. Now, if these are not public nuisance, I don't know what is. And, and, and here again, want to quote where I stem from because we've had different department of the government to come out and issue orders to close down and they were ignored. The code enforcement, the fact I followed them out there on this kind of notice that they, but because we feel that they were first, we got to look at whole law. And that covers the fact that community has, has to be safe, and it is not. And we get, and these forensics, they're coming, and we got also a whole new group with exception of about eight. Eight been there ever since day one. But I know, I don't know if one of you would, would be satisfied with city where when you go out on, on your front porch, you can see naked people walking around all day. People vaping, you know, vaping of the law and communities, they had got here a, a passive reef of one to the other. A man taking a bath with a water hole, and this is prior to the, a couple of weeks, they cannot go and bathe, but see, they were bathing and all out in front of us, using the bathroom. And I don't know how many of you, I know Julie was at the first public meeting we had at the, at right here in city. The stuff out of the people's mouth that was going on downtown, which you vomit. And was there because she spoke to that, and I don't think you would have this case. It's time this commission to move because we are tired of our community. We have fights, I feel sorry for Chief Jones, the number of calls that show up in our neighborhood almost weekly. So I'd be here speaking for Banner Community to ask that you all move. And the state's that where, where anybody come in, any group, regardless of whether it's the grandfather clause or what, they cannot eat a public nuisance. And I have film on everything I've seen. Anytime you want to look at them. We are really tired of it, and want you to do something about it. Now I've met with the mayor and much of results from that. I've talked to various ones of you. I see Chief Jones face, he stays in my community now with his force, breaking up kind of the fights. We have listened to profanity all day, every day. They're stealing from each other, and then they are trashing. For the last thirty days, you've got about nine, two people, and they are very vulgar. Goes on all day. And I sit on my porch every bit of three to four hours a day reading, and I have to look at it, Mrs. Should they call her name, she's right at the back of the toilets, came, sat on her front porch, so afraid. So I'm asking you all, and this is law here, a public nuisance cannot be created by kind of organization when it endangers the public. Want you all to consider that, thank you.
This evening, I greet you elected officials of our city commission. Also, this thing I acknowledge and greet all of our public servants, both elected and non-elected. They are friends of the city of Brunswick who are responsible for the day-to-day management of the city. Urbana Perry Park is a historic neighborhood. Our PA is laser focused, working together with each of you as elected as well as non-elected. We are also committed to working with businesses, organizations, churches to improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. If concerns, ask you to take note of our concern. Quote, for far too long, environmental policy decisions failed to aptly account for environmental injustice. Including the disproportionate disparate and cumulative impacts pollution and climate change have on income communities and communities of color. A neighborhood is the spark that ignites the essence of a city. A neighborhood is filled with history, landmarks, and culture that shield its connectivity to the city. We desire to meet you collectively, individually, and have a conversation to ask questions, share concerns, make suggestions to chart a new and better course, our Urbana Perry Park hood and the city of Brunswick. On the fence line as well as the front line of environmental toxic exposure. Decades, our neighbors have been dealing with human health concern, legacy pollution, continued exposure from harm chemicals and day-to-day environmental injustice. Perhaps I need to remind you that we, the people in the neighborhood are the life of the city of Brunswick. Of our concerns, and I emphasize some of our concerns include is the amount of things the city will receive from the lead hazard reduction, opening homes grant. I posed some of these questions to you on July third. Have not received a response. What is the amount of funds the city will receive from brownfield grants and which brownfield grants? What fund have been received from super fund grants as well as which super funds? Nineteen eighty-four. I repeat, eighteen eighty-four. The U.S. EPA designated Terry is a super fund site. Thirty-nine years later. Thirty-nine years. What's been happening? What has been done? Who has answers? What is the city clean energy plan? Do you have one? Who is the city's sustainability officer? Do you have one? What is the complete decommissioning plan for the plan? Do we know, do you know? We know you should know. Decommissioning plan, all plants have to happen. Have you seen Wilcox apartment that is prior to Friday, last Friday? I have a photo. Can't see it, I'll give it to you. I intended to make a copy for each of you, but mine ran out of ink this afternoon. Brad Piazza, I've mentioned before, Port City Park has failed to meet with Urbana Perry Park residents regarding the twenty-three zero Sloska Street property plan development. We asked, and so far he is not met. Another concern, improve the ordinance regarding derelict structures and properties. I looked at well, I have a, and it's not a complete record of about such properties. So that lets us know, because our neighbor asking tells me and as well as our neighbors that the ordinance needs to be improved upon. And we are willing to work with Mr. Hunter and his staff to make improvements. The Glen Avenue overlooking the marsh was implemented with total disregard of Banner Perry Park neighborhood and our NPA. Total disregard. So you already know, we are asking for codification of all neighborhood planning assistance. Why? It's essential to have thriving neighborhoods. It's essential to strengthen the voices and skills of city residents. It's essential to enhance engagement through anticipation in building and shaping their neighbors. Essential to foster neighborhood pride. It's essential to establish continuity and sustainability, so we ask you to heed concerns. As I said, we are willing to meet with you collectively, individually. As I said, we are willing to meet with you collectively, individually. Please do not ignore us. If you do, let me inform you that our MPA will be consistent about identifying, addressing our concerns. And it won't just be my voice. Fortunately, we have no problem sacrificing a few minutes come before our city commission. The Urbana Perry Park MPA can monthly meetings at sixteen, the fourth Tuesday of the month. Be responsible, accountable. Attend our meetings. Thank you for your time. Copies of these even though I email it, but I'm to our city clerk.
Perfect. Um, I don't want out of that portion, I don't want a couple of things to go without saying, number one. In regards to uh what we see on G Street. Uh, has been several communications and apartments are not bifurcated. So when a code enforcement officer goes out, they are working textually along with our legal department because that right thing to do. So there aren't facets of a city government that is making that decision. So not only with coercment, but also with our legal department and also with direct communication uh from this municipality directly to those um who have convened on G Street. We've been very honest with about what we believe the appropriate way to open any facility uh that wants to work in indigent care. We've been very honest with them about the steps that they should take. Um, they've been very clear, they are not going to take steps. And because they have not taken those steps, we uh move forward um with legal remedies and we can open and honest out that. Uh, the next thing that I want to speak to is our continued work. Um, not only at the staff level, but also at the commission level um to ensure that anyone working in the space, indigent care, whether they are grandfathered in legally or not. We have asked openly and directly to go through the regulatory process that municipality has set up. Because in that regulatory process, exactly, I think what we want our our ordinances to do was ensure that there is cohesion around a plan and in an area and that cohesion forces that group or that entity that want to work in indigent care. Not only work with the faith-based organizations that are connected most in the in the in the example of G Street, you have Zen and the example of of uh the well, you have Reverend Engelhart's church right by it. And both of those facilities, you also have schools that are in the same area. Have Burrows Mallett for G Street, have Glenn Academy for uh the well. In our ordinance, we've asked to have conversations. Every single impacted entity to ensure that you're working that space, that do it in a cohesive, smart, safe manner brings people to point of uh bringing cohesive to their own lives. And that's what we want any program working uh in the in care space to do. I also do not want to um skip over the fact there have been several investments by this mission. Um, not only indigent care, not only acute homeless, but also blurs that go to ensure uh massive amounts of dollars to ensure people find themselves in that space. So this commission has also only given money to those providing acute homeless care, but also given money to organizations to ensure mothers and fathers and families don't find themselves in that situation. So those things that this commission continues to invest in, how we work with community to continue to work uh on furthering, we can do better in the in the area of homeless care. Um, the one I I really want to take a quick second to talk about, we um are always happy about MPA involvement. Uh, we are thankful for MPA involvement. Um, the the one thing that I I do want to bring up side of ensuring uh this Collins that you get um the answers to your to your first questions, which are dollar amounts that Ms. Cath I'm sure can can pull for us quickly. Uh, I I do want to touch track that I believe, and I will continue to stand up for this person who has number one through the leadership of Commissioner Harris, created framework and the foundational principles that MPAs um are working under. It was her leadership to create that. And even more so, I believe this commission has shown it's to be a commission that directly listens to MPAs and their beliefs on issue. And their beliefs on a myriad of issues have driven decisions of this commission to ensure that we create outcomes that are driven by people. So I I do want to this commission and also thank our PAs uh for being forthright with their unending in the issues that end them uh in their communities and we uh not only will say we will go to work, but we will continue to work as have hand in hand with you to work on uh the issues and and the good things bring forward. Uh, next up, we have uh a proclamation claiming the month of December as National Recovery Month because we have no one here. Um, we receive it, we will read this and this is on the behalf of Representative Townsend. So I want to thank him for his service at the state. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall and well-being and recovery from addiction occurs every day through of recovery support services and programs. And whereas prevention of substance abuse disorders, disorders works, treatment is effective and people recover across and around the nation, resulting in millions of people across the United States living happy, just and free and term recovery. And whereas the twenty twenty-three Blas Recovery Across Georgia Board celebrates that recovery is real and recognizes that are never alone in this journey through recovery and will deliver a hundred overdose aid kit communities across Georgia accessible in local government buildings. And whereas education through communities about recovery and addiction is essential to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by many people in recovery. And whereas to help more people experience and sustain long-term recovery, the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health Development Disabilities, the Clinton Foundation, the Georgia Council for Recovery, Mobilize Recovery, Serve URX and the Georgia General Assembly Working Group on Addiction and Recovery and All Residents of the State of Georgia to participate in National Recovery Month. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Johnson, along with my commissioners do hereby proclaim the September twenty twenty-three as National Recovery Month, the city of Brunswick and call residents of the city of Brunswick to observe this month with pro programs, activities, ceremonies to sell to support this year's recovery theme, Recovery Real. Thank you for that. We will now move on to update three one one software.
Good evening, everybody. How are you today? Alright, so it's been, I think we brought this up in November, last year, December. Um, we looked at a package from Civic Plus, um which was an app based for your cell phone for the constituents to um be able to put in work requests, uh emergency, able to um put in comments to commission as to the city. After doing research with that, we uh moved, looked, started looking at a different project program called Text My Gov. Um, we mainly, it's a based instead of an app based because of more people use our phones to text and you can text with a flip phone. Whereas most people who eighty to ninety percent of all downloaded apps are used once and then deleted. So everybody can text. So we're looking at Text My Gov, actually, um so it's also cheaper than the app-based program that we were looking at before, about nineteen thousand dollars a year less than what we were looking at before. Um, we and with this product, we can also push out to the community and sign up for hurricane information or emergency information as well as things going on in the city. We also, it also will boost our web track. This also ties right in with code enforcement's um ticketing system. And automatically, it's the same company that builds that. So we, as well as being able to push it to Public Works Ticketing System. So depending on what they're putting in, potholes, again, the best example ever, potholes, we'll go to um Public Works, trash left on the side of the road, we'll go to code enforcement first. So and also we do as well as um, sorry. We're also able to do short codes, which um for citizens to do holes, we can just say potholes and they can just send text that the picture of where it's got to go, where it is and trash, same thing, it will write to um Public Works or to code enforcement. So that's about it. We have this in our budget already, so we're ready to start on this and we plan uh IT plans to have this by the end of March and have it ready up and running and start pushing it out to the citizens of Brunswick. That's all I got. Questions? Yes, Ms. Martin.
Could you explain under additional services, what some of those are in if we're looking to take advantage of any of those? They don't really make sense to me, but I'm I'm not a high.
There we go. Alright, um, so the enhanced care media package, uh we're not not and excuse me, none of those will be added at this point in time. That's just part of additional services that we can get from them at this uh.
So as part of the sixty-eight hundred annual fee, is it, are they counting the number of text messages? Like, do we get? That do we?
There are seventy-five thousand text messages a year and as we get closer and add, we can, if we get close, say we start the March by or not March, it's March, we would be um if we see by lie that we're close to seventy thousand. And I don't know why I said I really meant end of October for this to be implied, March from the other one. Um, so as we get closer to say January one, we're seeing that we're even getting close to seventy-five thousand, we will add more and the they actually will say that they will give a better deal um the numbers they have here. So.
So and just for Christ's sake, then when they think about the texts, it's every time like you text me, that's one, me texting back to you, that's.
Now you coming in, so you as the citizen reporting something, that's that's what they're counting, not the text back applies back. And that's the other thing that this will we will be able to do is write back to the citizen who puts in the um complaint about what's going on. If it's a project that something that we're, you know, that's not on our, we will be able to say it's not on our radar at this time, but thank you for letting us know and we will looking into it sort of come back.
And so and I'm probably asking a question that somebody else wants to ask, but as far as our city staff, how will that be handled? Like if a citizen sees eagle dumping and they take it through and on the app and.
It will automatically go, but that's a great example because that one of the code enforcement's I work um ticketing system and um code enforcement will get right up. It'll they'll, it'll be said, there's a new ticket being put in. They will look at it and go and take care of it. Same with at Public War, Gero will uh, one of his people will dish out what's got to be to the right people.
So the ticket that you're speaking of is also recorded as an E somewhere? I mean, how do you keep up with?
Ticketing, I work, I work is a web service that uh John's team uses to track their work and it just appears there.
Okay.
From this product automatically filters it in that and we will workflows of where things go depend on keywords as well as um using the short codes.
How does city staff feel about all of this?
No, I have not asked, but and I have talked about this.
I mean, if it's going to be like cumbersome and this whole new, you know.
So that's the reasons I was excited that our I work software brought this to us. Currently, everybody in my department uses this software. So it handles not only the code enforcement tracking and the casework that we do for it handles our building permits, all permits, all building inspections. We transitioned our business license to it this year and um it creates for us a one style. We have limited seats available within the software. So we also have already within the software, um engineering, uh Public Works, Joint Water and Sewer actually uses it for us as does uh the Department of Health as they do reviews on building plan. So all this information brought in together in a single place allows us to report more frequently and respond efficiently.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Does it give a response back?
Well, yes, when the tickets close, it will do a response back. And that's part of the reasons why I like it is because it is tied into the ticketing system, which will generate that, hey, you're finished. It's been fixed, the pothole and the garbage is cleared and filled. Fill the pothole with the garbage. Anything else?
How about the initiator of the request? Where are they in the loop? How are they?
The citizen who puts it in will get back stating where we are in the ticket L as when it gets started and when it gets finished off. They will always, we will all communicate back to that bird, letting them know that their issue is being worked on and or cleared up.
That's great work. I'm glad we're moving in this space. We know how important it is, I think. Um, two things for me, one, how how are we being a part of this program for those of us who aren't as tech savvy? Under our A lot of home may not, there may not be a cell phone at all, so is still.
We will, they also have a web form that we will be adding to the website as well for those people who have that as well as um, I think we're gonna also have it. So if they only call in, someone will fill out that web form for them.
Okay.
And then it keep them to date.
Perfect.
We'll figure out some way.
Yeah, those people. As long as we have some space where we may not have that technology can plug in, get the ticket started and then have that loop. Um, the second question for me was because we don't, this was a mass confusion um the Pinova fire, right? Which is as a municipality, we don't have the power to push notifications to your phone.
Right.
Like override your phone, we have to go through the emergency protocol and when they do it is when that button pushed. Because of that, it's extremely important for people to sign for this program.
Yes, sir.
So the rollout is super important. Just want to make sure that we have a.
We doing a media blitz on this and it also comes down to you all, all anytime you're in front of the news at anything, mention product and mention that it's there. Same with the Code Red product that as well. Let them know to sign up and so they get this information.
Wonderful. Whenever you all get the overlay, whether it's a flyer, whether it's, because there are some areas that I believe McIntyre Court, other place, like we're going to need to go to the door and put a flyer there. Um, and so I just want to make sure you guys have that and then giving that to all of the.
They is as well. This company will also supply us with a media and uh
Okay.
product packet to be able to get, let our citizen know what is going on.
Okay.
About this product.
You know, that brings up a thought. Will this do thing with the police, fire, that sort of thing?
Not at the time. We have not tied this in with them yet.
Going to be uh this construit uh E nine one one and I will work for it. And we able to affect it.
Yes. Yes. This would be non-emerg, this totally not emergency issues. Yes.
Good way to say.
So you'll have direct. So you'll have directions on downloading the app and.
Well, that's the beauty of it. There's no app to download. It'll just be texting. We'll have codes for them, like I said, potholes.
Yeah.
And it will go right to, yep, just gotta go that because apps, as I said, have been mentioned. Eighty-nine and ninety percent of app downloaded, used once and then forgotten. We can all look at our phones and see that and go, ah, I remember that. We feel that, I felt as well as administration, that'd be one reason why texting, everybody can do it. My dad can at three in the morning, so most everybody can text. Yeah, he's listening to this. That's why, so, um, yes, texting better than app at this point.
Well, I hope we take advantage of it because I think it's simple enough. It should, you know, be able to be user very friendly and.
Yes.
When I came on board in two thousand twelve, and we, Bill Weeks was our senior junior. And we were trying to come up with something to help facilitate code. And everything was so cumbersome. That's just good.
So that's why thing, most everybody does it. So it's not going to be that of a learning curve, we hope. Anything else?
I just thought about, uh, we didn't mention animal control, which we will, because that is a non-emergency call sometimes. And I think it's important because we have a lot of those city that need that direct connection. So we will into, um, trying to get connection to the animal as well.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, guys.
We'll now move on to items to consider for approval. Consider approval by nineteen twenty twenty-three, workshop in August second twenty twenty-three, regularly scheduled meeting minutes.
I'll make a note that we approve both the work session, regular scheduled meeting, um, meeting minutes from August second, and drill nineteen.
Hearing the first, do I hear a second? Hearing the first and the second, all the labor show by the usual sign of I, I, all those opposed the same, hearing motion passes. We'll now want to consider approval of historic preservation fund grant, Director Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Did you see in your pit, uh, pleased to, um, let you get, the city of Brunswick has awarded a historic preservation fund. Grant from the historic preservation of the Department of Community Affairs. The city of Brunswick has maintained the certified local government status with the state historic preservation office for almost two days. Uh, the CLG status allows the city live for grants from historic preservation division to do, uh, to historic resources. Eight national register historic districts and update design guideline. Uh, the city has been awarded seven grants through this program since two thousand one. Um, and to maintain our certified local government status. The city is required to update our historic resource survey of the Old Town National Historic District. And luckily through this, uh, HPF grant program, uh, historic preservation division has awarded us. One thousand seven hundred and four dollars and four cents to assist, uh, with the history source survey. The city will provide matching funds, uh, via three thousand dollars needed for the historic president board this year. And eleven thousand five hundred and two dollars in in-kind service. Uh, this will be, uh, staff support and more between myself and Matthew Hill, and also volunteer time from our historic preservation board. One of only seven cities in the, uh, state see the grant this year. So it's a very competitive program, um, but we've also been good at getting this over the years. And it's an important part for, um, overall our historic creation program to be able to update, uh, the, the resource action throughout Old Town. So invited about this project. Um, the grant agreement is, uh, very lengthy and, uh, very boilerplate from the state. Uh, the city attorney has looked at it and we are fine with everything within it. Uh, do ask that you approve, um, the grant agreement at this time presented. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
I have a question. Um, I understand Old Town, that's been a historic district for quite.
Nineteen seventy-nine.
Sometime.
Yep.
But what concerns me is other historic areas that we have in our community that may not have been designated yet. They historic district. Can you talk about that and when we can start pulling them?
I had actually hoped by for a resource survey of Newtown year. But the state changed some of the certified local government requirements. And they literally said, if we do not do a resurvey of all this year, we'll lose certified local government status. So that's why we, we had to do this grant, um. That is, our next initiatives is to try to get out into Newtown and Perry Park. Um, as we know from housing study and all of our researches. Eighty percent, ninety percent of the structures in Brunswick are class, be classified as historic. The preservation offices, they're older than fifty years old. Um, that necessarily mean they qualify in a historic district. Um, but we still have a lot of work to do citywide. Uh, we do have, um, obviously our two historic districts that have recommended in Windsor Park and Dixville. Um, but the state has also done, and I didn't really realize this until more recently. Um, apparently in the nineties, um, when the state prison office had more staff. They would actually go out in teams and do field surveys within cities. And actually a much larger amount of, because it's been documented than I knew previously. Um, there's actually, almost every neighborhood has some documentation on it. And, um, one of the things that this group will do is the state actually database. That compiles all that information and you can go map and see where each one of these historic properties is located. So this will help up that information. Um, but I think it will also assist up for the next town because we'll be able to say we're up to date in these days. But we still have this much to, to survey. But yeah, it is an important, an item for us to continue to look at.
So do you anticipate that there might be a cycle of grant would help assist in, um, creating new historic districts within our?
And that's specifically what, um, historic preservation fund grant. The three things that they cover are national registrations, uh, historic resource surveys. And historic design guidelines. And we've actually used that program for all three of those activities over two thousand. Historic survey of, uh, uh, Windsor and Dixville and Habersham Park was done with that grant. The national register nomination to both of those historic districts was done with that grant. New design guidelines that did in twenty twenty for the Old Town were done with that all through this program. Um, so, um, and only certified governments are able to apply for programs.
So does it look at it broadly, like in the city limits? And because the historic district, the Old Town historic district, that just kind of gets drilled down on. Or to keep its certification, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, and one of the things too, I don't, gets into the weeds a little bit. Um, calling twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, Matthew Hill and I worked, um, some others to update national register listing for Old Town. That encompassed a broader, um, period of significance. When, we also had to bring that listing and all the information up to modernsters. One of the benefits of that is we have a pretty complete developmental history of this. And so we know when each area of the city developed, its main focuses were, um, what are the primary functions with these areas? Um, what we don't necessarily has building by building, building detail in all of those areas. We've got some, but it's not beat. So it's, you know, it's always a work in progress and, uh, but, uh, this is, you know. Preservation is one of my babies, so I don't mind working these things bit by bit.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Hearing no, enter for motion.
I'll make the month to approve the HPS grant agreement with E T.
Hearing the first and the second, all those in favor show by the usual sign of I, I, all those opposed the same, human motion passes. Thank you, Director Hunter. We'll now move on to consider adoption. It's one zero eight zero amendment to chapter twenty-three ordinance, Joan.
Thank you, Commissioners. Of course, we're here back to get this tree ordinance, so I'll give another brief summary of what we've changed. Um, if you have any other additions, I'll be happy to take them. Um, essentially the two primary areas where we've made changes. The first is the public notice and the changes there are we change the, um, language around posting the sign in a conspicuous location. Previously, it was kind of immediately adjacent to the tree, which could put us in a situation where it's not really visible from the street or the right of way. We're in a ditch, so the new, which kind of gives you some discretion to make it conspicuous and visible from the most immediate public way. Um, the, it adds an additional mailing requirement for public notice. Um, one of the things the tree board really to incorporate was more public notice, but maybe not burden some costs that the city did pass on to the applicant. Like some of our other zoning ordinances with newspaper postings and things. So we elected on mailing, um, it does require people within the block adjacent to the tree or on immediate properties adjacent to the tree. Be mailed a notice fifteen days prior to the, uh, public meeting. Uh, we successfully with Hannah, we've, we've really been doing this for the last year because it does exceed the limits of the current ordinance. Um, I would say it's the primary driver of actually calling and expressing, um, lots of homeowners, you know. If they don't necessarily have an opinion one way or the other, actually call and say what's going on because they got a letter in. Um, and then in general, the addition, that fifteen day notice requires a third change. And we used fifteen days because that matched a lot of other zoning actions in our awards. So it just kind of makes the administrative policies for all within the city. So the second area we changed is the, um, essentially we've added it, and it is intended to be a sort of a last resort process. For a developer to pay the city to replant a tree when the demand itself. Situation where a tree has to be moved from the public way. Um, just to give two quick examples where this might happen. Say you have a small, maybe a sub-saw and you want to build a house on it. The only place you can put a driveway is across the right of way. If there's a large tree there, doing that driveway might necessitate removal of the tree. Uh, the large canopy tree and you already have a small lot and now there's a house on it. There really, there might not be a location suitable to plant a large canopy tree. Um, so in that area, we might give the developer the, um, to pay to have the city replant. Of course, the city would try to focus on reading in the immediate public area, you know, we want to kind of preserve canopy generally at. Uh, this whole process as well is something that would have to go before the tree board for review and approval. So in general, if they chose to, if you're a normal developer, move to public tree and you're replanting it. Um, that wouldn't have to go to the tree board. Well, it would go to the tree board approval, but the whole process wouldn't be as cumbersome. So they're kind of disincentivized from wanting to go to the first place, but important that it's there as an option. Um, another scenario that could be common is when we zoning, like if we expand downtown zoning. The, um, D C area where we have zero front backs for commercial properties. Sometimes bringing the facade of the building forward really, it requires the removal of the tree in the public right of way. Because the facade of the building is going to be taking up too much of that canopy. And, you know, removing too much of it is, is tantamount to killing. Um, but, you know, scenarios, in general, the city is always going to be focused on preserving canopy. The replanting requirement is always to be there, uh, it doesn't change any of that. Um, I know the commission expressed the concern, the wish that this definitely not become the first option for developers. Um, do think that, especially as our tree board stands now, they would never blindly on a, oh, I'd just rather pay the money and the city do it. You know, they want the canopy to be preserved at, um, possible, they want the trees that are there to be preserved instead of replanting for the sake of it. So that's about it. Any questions? I'm happy to take them. Uh, we do have Joe Wright here, our chairman, chairman, chairman of the tree board. I did want to acknowledge the work they've done. I mean, we've been looking at it the past year and our tree right now is really amazing. Uh, these people work very hard, um, and are very responsive. So, um, they did support the ordinance as it's written, but sorry, I'll take any questions from you.
I, I have a question, or really, really on the initial fifteen day. Where you put the sign up and send out the letters, um, nothing was mentioned about banding tree with flagging tape or something. I know y'all got in handover and it was very full because if you can't get the sign, if there's several trees. And people go and they, they don't know what tree, they just see the sign. So, um, if you, I don't know if you need to add that language, but that the tree needs to be banned in some way so people can see it, look at it, go, yeah, okay. Um, have a better understanding of that. Um, my other point was the one you were just talking about where the permitting review. Um, and that only applies to protected or pub property trees. Will that also go through a fifteen day notification to surrounding property owners? They know something's come to that tree so that when it comes down, if it does come down, you don't get the, goodness, they're cutting this tree.
Yeah, so it would go through the same notice period. We, we put them all public tree removal applications and we treat them all identity. Regardless of what posed outcome on the city side is, whether it's approval aisle or in between.
Okay, so that, like, as you said, would go through that same.
Yeah.
Okay, um, y'all don't feel there's anything onerous for developers or that are doing things by having to. Wear multiple time periods on some.
I think that is, um, that is always an issue of these kinds of development ordinance. Um, way I think that serves the purpose of kind of incentivizing bringing the trees. Um, we do often approve the building and the zoning actions before we get to this tree portion. Because that's part of your right of way, where, right of way work usually to begin doing site work and things like that prior to getting approval from the tree board. Uh, of course, that kind of depends on how pivotal the removal of a tree is project.
Yeah, and I will just say thank you again to the tree board. I mean, if anybody's ever attended one of those meetings, you realize how tedious the work can be and how you have to think. You know, it's a really good brain exercise, so, um, thank you for all that y'all have done and bringing this forward and being us a, a tree city.
Woman, thank you for your service. Thank you for, uh, always inviting me to Arbor Day. I don't have a yard, so I don't have anywhere to put the tree, but one way I'm going to be able to take you. Thank you for your work and the work on these change, you and your board. Just going off what you said, if we want to produce an event so that we could vote on it tonight in terms of banding. Um, the highlight action on the underlying portion at reads at least fifteen days, but not more than forty-five days prior to the public hearing for the tree board. The city shall place a sign or signs stating date, time and place of the, of the public hearing. And after that period, there can either be a comma or something to, as well as ban the possibly affected tree or public information. Something to that effect. And I'm assuming banned is kind of like an orange or something on it to say this tree.
Yeah, I think, and we've been, of course, because, you know, we, we recognize that it's important, but we just didn't think about it at the stage or bring it up. We'll always be making improvements.
Just so, um, we would put it forth as amended. Alright, that, if that is the, any questions, comments or additional amendments? Hearing no, we will open it for motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion. We adopt the ordinance in eighty, amendment to chapter twenty-eight tree ordinance with the amendment. For the modification made during this meeting. with the amendment for the modification made during this meeting.
Hearing a first, do a hear a second. Hearing a first and a second, all those in favor, the usual sign of I, I, all those opposed the same, hearing motion passes. Thank you much.
Good question.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Back in probably June, uh, there was some work done on highway seventeen, very large oak tree cut down. And I just before they got over here on seventeen, did some work on more oak tree. And large trees were, so they are they placing those trees?
So that was a removal done by Georgia Power. Um,
Did they have permission?
Unfortunately, the way that utilities work at night, they really have certain area around their utility pole where they have done the courtesy of notify us in the past generally, but they're not required to. There is an to replant a lot of trees, however, they won't be replacing those live oaks of large canopy. Just they'll be planting so trees that won't ever grow so high that they have to be cut down. They proposed trees right now. Um, they essentially fall was going to be the planting time. We're waiting to get a firm date from them, but we do expect we'll get that in the next month.
So all those trees will be replaced?
Yeah. Uh, like for like, but yes, they will be replanting fringe trees. I think we're actually increase the number to hopefully achieve somewhat of a similar canopy replacement. Their one tree on seventeen, they voluntarily didn't cut them, um, because it was particularly pretty and they thought they could work around it. Um, hopefully they'll continue to get that courtesy going forward.
That, that oak tree seventeen was right in front of Dart and the Brown House and probably Dart and the Brown was swung in that. Boy, they grew up, you know, that thing had some historical value. And I ride by their way and it's gone, didn't take. I, I say it really is when, when we have trees like that. So are historical as historical as the Dart and the Brown. It's not there anymore. We've lost it.
I agree, yeah.
The time to time, the really is, it's deeply, that's what we've done.
Can we, can we make sure that when they come, come to replant, that it falls in line with the design in for the M L K trail? That we're not putting trees right where the trail's going to go through. If somebody could just put that clear reminder, that would be a good idea.
We will. We've, we've talked some with them that um, Rick and I cooperatively operate the tree board. So we keep everybody on the same page, but we'll, I'll make sure that gets double checked.
We will now move on to discussion amendment to zone ordinance for the first reading, Director Hunter.
All right. Uh, thank you again, Mayor Ken. Um, this one's been a very long, um, getting here. Uh, back in April twenty twenty, uh, the city commission approved tracking with the coastal regional commission to complete apprehensive zip update to warning ordinance. Um, we've been here many times more talking about this. Uh, in fact, uh, the work over the last three years has included um, thirty planning and appeals commission meetings, uh, four city workshops, uh, three public at city commission meeting, four N P A meetings and two public open house over the last three and a half years to get feedback about our zoning limits updates. Um, we've also uh, talked with a number of stakeholders over that time, well over two dozen. Um, met with a little on the college about some of their needs. And all of that has compiled into the zoning ordinance revision documented before you. Uh, in order to keep this brief, because as you use the packet, it's a lot. And when you throw in the red line version, it's even more. Just to summarize, we've done, um, we've deleted, modified or added provision no longer apply or are needed to make the ordinance clearer and more active. Um, we make the ordinance more user friendly and efficient to the use and administer. We've removed outdated provisions that are no longer needed or applied to current conditions. We've clarified language and intent of ordinance providing regulations. Um, we've improved the organization of articles and sections with the ordinance to make it easier to get appropriate guidance and regulations governing using their development requirement within each specific zone and district in the city. And we've eliminated certain zone that we no longer need and have created new zones that are more appropriate to current development goals and conditions. Uh, it's a whole lot to say. We updated our definition. We reduced number of zoning classifications we have. Uh, we couldn't two new classifications that we think are very important. Um, and have those in that map divided within your packet. And um, we feel that uh, we've also shortened the ordinance considerably what it was before. Um, we've also spent a great deal of time clarifying, solidating our plan development regulations, which is something that uh, we had up against a couple of the last few years. And um, we feel uh, the planning and appeals commission and staff all feel you're ready to bring this forward at the first reading. Um, the process for he is we've actually had this document online for a couple of months of the city website. Um, and continue to gather any feedback. Um, we would have a public hearing at the city commission meeting and then uh, bring it forward option after the public uh, during the uh, city attorney's items. So after three and a half, we are at the end. Unfortunately, I did not win our bets. I was checked by the city manager and I was with three projects. And unfortunately, I think this one came in a lot, but we've gotten it done. And um, we appreciate all of your help with this. The plant appeals commission put forward a Herculean effort uh, in undertaking this. Russ uh, Rain, our right hand man in this project has been incredible. And uh, we're happy to begin the approval process. And I'm happy. Are there any questions that you've got?
Questions or comments?
Oh, y'all done a boat load of work and then I'm so, thank you. I have one question that is on page twelve, but I repeated another place in the whole document. But it has to do with conforming uses abandonment. In that three hundred and sixty days, that's as we've been before and John, you've been here long enough. Three hundred and sixty five days is a week long time to allow that long a gap for a non-conforming use. So what are your thoughts on that?
So um, that, that's consistent with the language that we've had. That's something I don't will change. Um, but um, with a conforming use, um.
Is that, that, that's your regardless of ownership?
Correct. So we'll just use an example. We have um, a, an industrial site that has been zoned out. We can use Bay Street. One of the properties on Bay Street has been an industrial use for sixty years. It ceases and at some point previously that has been rezoned as general commercial or general residential in the hopes that when that went away, it would revert back to a lesser use. So with that three hundred and sixty five days of lack of use, um, I, it seems generous that I, I think that's a year's time of something being used. I think is, is a pretty appropriate amount of time to make sure that um, we're, we're not overreacting to something shut for a short period of time of reason. If they ca, um, if it shifts and it, and it changes and it's closed for a period of time, we're still going to add it back in and re-o that location and look at her or not. Um, it's something that should be allowed to move forward. Um, it's something we can potentially look at over the next, we've got a couple of weeks. Um, I'll do a quick survey on some other municipalities and see what we drop that to six months or eight months or hundred and twenty days and uh, bring that back at the next meeting.
Cause I, I know it's created contentious situations in the past um, with killer properties on conforming uses and
Yeah.
it's not, and when you have to go through that, so if, if you could check on that, that would be.
Sure thing. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Inside, just piggyback on the inside of that non-conforming use, is there a um, requirement notice for us? Like a notice that we sent out to them before that three sixty five? Like at six months, do we send some at, do we notify them that they are no longer forming in this space? We don't. So it's just you wait to three six five and then not, you would not advise to do.
Okay, okay.
Back on.
Correct. Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see it at a hundred and eighty days, but I, I mean, that's six months. But a non-conforming use is a non-conused.
Right.
Yeah. You give it so much time, it's, it's like almost never get rid of it.
Always grandfathered.
Yeah, I can definitely look at that and, and uh, I'd feedback for next meeting. And if we need to make a change, that's something we can incorporate easily.
John, any idea how much money we've got involved in?
Um, could actually, I think we spent me thirty, about thirty-five thousand dollars um, with this, with the regional commission when we had that, had them under contract. That doesn't include halftime and our volunteer time. Um, I'm getting paid on that by having stolen us from the regional commission. So um, I, we made out very well. If you recall when we started this, um, we had budget eighty thousand dollars in twenty, twenty twenty to revamp our sign ordinance. And I came with a proposal from the regional commission to get us much further down the road. And uh, while that took, that road was a long road, it was a lot less expensive road.
I'm going to ask a question and I can't remember. I know parking and storage of vehicles and parking spaces was all some new language about that. But I know that there are areas in specific residential home where there's a plethora of vehicles, boat, trailers, skis, you name it, it's there, front and back.
So part is covered in our parking requirements in terms of how much and I have to look at our development requirements of things moving forward. Um, development requirement standpoint, they're limited on the space that can be dated on residential properties for parking. And we add in a codicil for storage of other types of vehicle limit for those. Uh, next up bit of we're going to be working on, uh, because we've got lots of other sections that we're going to work on. Um, we've actually looked at doing a separate as part of property maintenance ordinance in our housing ordinances, attacking that killer issue much more directly than what our parking requirements are on zoning. So that is more in line with um, more recent requirements and property maintenance requirements. So hopefully we'll be able to back forward in about two months.
My last question is how, once, once we approve changes, how will all of it communicate with through our municipal court system? So they are up to speed on changes in the law and ordinances and making sure that when people pour them, so.
Going to have to work. Yeah, and actually there are very few chains, major changes. So I don't think that's going to be much of a relearning process. And it's not common for us to have zoning related items before we record. Much more of what we're going to be dealing with is as we add our property maintenance code through this year and our housing code, we have to do a little bit more education upfront. Um, because that, that's actually something we do bring in this court regularly.
Yes, that's correct. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you, Director Hunter.
Thank you.
For to work with you. Um, and can you send back some kind of official response on the three C once you check?
Yes, I will send it out to all of you and uh, and is I, if I alter language, I'll put an addendum on the website. All of this, all of this information available on the planning department webpage. Uh, we've got the uh, ordinance written out version like you have. We headline versions so people can changes. We have a synopsis of what all those changes are, we maps, we have the usage. So all of that information is on the planning department webpage.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
We are, we have adverts for the public hearing, which will be we will. Oh, that's right. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, we do have exact session.
For the need of leashing.
For the need of litigation. Uh, we will need to adjourn. I hear motion.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn into session for litigation.
Hearing a first, do a hear a second.
Second.
Uh, microphone not be, might be, might not be on, but Pearl as well.
Personnel.
Hearing a, hearing a first or second. First and a second, all those in favor show by the usual sign of I, I, all those same, hearing no, we are adjourned to do a session.